Good evening. It is 6:30 and we are going to call our city council meeting Tuesday, July 8th to order. I apologize, we can never start a meeting early, but we can always start them late. So that's why you had to sit out there and watch us as the audience. So now that we've been called to order, before I do our invocation, if everyone could rise, and we'll recognize a moment of silence for the tragedy down in the Hill Country, please. Thank you. And with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Halla, our city attorney, to lead us in our invocation, if you could stay standing.
Thanks Mayor. Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening. We just throw ourselves down to your mercy. We thank you so much for the gift of life. It's something that we have been reminded of very, very starkly over the last few days, that you, it's a gift that you've given us. You have the right to take it, you have the right to give it. We know it's not something that we've earned. You've told us that in Romans 3, 10 through 12, no one is righteous, no not one. All have sinned and fall short of the glory of God. We ask that we be remembered just of your graciousness and your mercy, because you do give us that life. We're here, we're living, we're breathing, we can glorify you, we can praise you, we can come together as a community, as a city, we can gather together, we can help people, we can encourage people, we can be there for people, we can support people. We thank you so much for the opportunity that we have to do that. We thank you so much that we've got the opportunity to do that again, our first responders. That's part of what we're here for tonight, and again, we're reminded of that so starkly over the last several days. Thank you for what an outstanding group of first responders we have, the leadership that we have, the individuals that put them in charge. We thank you so much that they're here as well. We thank you for this council. I thank you for the opportunity that I have to work with this council, to see them struggle with what's best for the city and what is the right thing to do. We ask you to watch over them tonight. Bless everyone here, and it's your son's name we pray. Amen.
Councilmember Powers, will you lead us in our pledges, please? Alright, thank you. You can be seated. So tonight, we're going to go over the rules of the quorum. I'm assuming the majority of you are going to leave after item number four. You should stay for the fireworks, it's always fun, but I understand. So with that, rules of the quorum is just, we're going to maintain bearing, we're going to maintain respect for everybody that's speaking from here and as well as out there and at the podium. Every week, we do honor a fallen member for our meeting. We dedicate it to them. So I am going to draw from our jar, that doesn't really shake up well. And within it be fitting, today we will honor the Dallas five, Officer Crowell, Sergeant Smith, Officer Thompson, Senior Corporal Arons, and Officer Zamarepa from what would be the nine-year anniversary yesterday. And with that, I am going to ask the council members to exit our area, and we will go stand on the wall. The fire department is going to give a presentation, and they do not want their backs to us.
How are y'all doing? Good. Well, first I want to thank Mayor and the council, and Bev allowing us to have an opportunity for a minute to come stand before the wonderful citizens of this community that we love to protect and serve. It's an opportunity for me to have what I call a proud dad moment, even though some of them are older than me. It's an opportunity just to kind of give everybody a chance to see the men and women of this department. We've got some new hires, we've got some promotions, we've got a retirement. And so I just wanted to take a few minutes and ask if we could do this before council gets down to business, and be able to bring some people up, so you as the citizens and family members here can recognize them and give them, give a moment to thank them for what they do. Because I want to thank the families first for loaning us their loved one for 48 hours at a time to come out there and protect people that they have never met, and they don't even know. It tells you true about who they are. The, man, I didn't make people cry already? Good grief. It gives them a chance to, you know, the pride, the heart that they have. This job is, it's not an easy job. It was everybody do it. But for the families to say, hey, go miss an anniversary, a birthday. Okay, man, my apologies, no. You know, anniversaries, birthdays, holidays and stuff, it's tough. And you loan them to us for 48 hours to come in and protect and serve the citizens of this community. And I'm honored. I'm proud of everybody standing out here. It's been a fun eight years. We've come a long way, in almost eight years. We've come a long way in almost eight years with the staffing we have, the beautiful station we have across the street, the council we have. There's lots of great things coming here in the future. This city's going to take off, it's going to take off in the right way. Not a bad way, but in the right way. So if you will, I'm going to start calling some individuals up. I'll recognize them, introduce you to them, and then we're going to have their family members come up, whoever they wish, to do what we call a penning ceremony. They're going to pin their badges on them, and then we'll move through the ranks. So all my firefighter, EMT, and paramedics, if you will, please come forward. You're going to be on camera, and I'm going to stand to the side. These amazing men and women, the ones that grab those nozzles and barrel off into your house when that house is on fire, the first one to dive into a car to help you out and protect you in any way they can. So I'm going to start down here. This is firefighter, paramedic Scott Horton, came on a few months ago. Most of them, less than six months. I got one semi old dog. Leo Overgon, known him a long time, firefighter, paramedic. Matt Higgins-Bortham has been a part of this department since I came on in 2018. He was a volunteer. He went to firefighter school, or fire academy, went to EMT school, and now he's a full-time firefighter, EMT with the department. He's been here a long time. Ty Stewart, firefighter, EMT. Ms. Emily Cooper there, firefighter, paramedic. And then Marie Hughes. These last three were recently hired here in October. No, two months ago, month ago. They actually started, y'all haven't even been on for a month yet now, have you? I've slept, the mayor kept me up for two days doing some stuff. So they just recently come on board. So we're honored to have them on board. I'm excited to see all them grow. There's many years of experience standing in front of you right here. Lots of knowledge. It's, I'm excited to watch these individuals grow up and see who they become. So at this time, family members. Chief Stow, if you mind coming up there with me, please, sir. Family members. Now you tell me to get out of the way, ma'am. So any family members that you loved ones up here, I would like for you to come up so you can do the penning. Come on up. Ty, I'm your loved one, buddy. I got you. Alright, let's go. Cooper. And Leo's crossed the way. Alright. Horton, where's Horton? Horton, am I going to be your loved one too? Okay, no. Captain Uno. Captain Martinez. These guys used to work together in another city. And we're, man, getting these guys to come on board a little embassy here was an honor. These both guys came from another city, just across the water. 16 years, 15 years? 18? 13. Alright. Lots of experience. Alright, so fact, come on, please, come on up, pin them. Let me get out of the way. Some of these are a little tough, I think. Alright, we got everybody pinned up. Outstanding. So again, this is your firefighter, paramedics that you have on shift each and every day, 48 hours, 96 off. It's an honor to be a part of their team, and enjoy, and I'm looking forward to the future. Thank y'all. Alright, now we'll move up to the drivers. I need my three lovely drivers. Yes, I got to stay here. I'm going to get yelled at again. Now Angela's on me, so I've got two of them telling me what to do. Okay, it's alright. My bride's in the back pointing to me, standing in the middle. Alright, so these gentlemen right here with some recent changes we have within the department. Some changes in the department that we have, we've had some promotional process. These guys were firefighter, EMTs, and now have recently promoted to our new drivers on each shift. So you have a captain, you have a driver, and then you have two firefighter, EMT, or paramedics on each shift. And so these gentlemen here now recently come on board this month, this month, last month, two months ago. I've slipped a little. But now they're the new drivers on A, B, and C shifts. So family members, for these three gentlemen, Hope, Theron Johnson, my apologies, Ron Fertato, Jordan Dillard. Family, who's, we got, nobody loves y'all? Here we go. Here we go. Who do you got? Johnson. And Dillard. And then, oh, Cap is your loved one. Outstanding. If it's hanging there, it'll be, he'll probably knock it off here in a minute. He's got to get on the Segway to go back across the street here in a minute, so. Some of y'all caught it. Take your picture. Oh, everybody get in there, gather up with your family. Back up, buddy. Get up here, get your picture, bud. Say cheese. Maukup. And Jordan's been here for a long time. He was here back in the day too as a volunteer in 2013, so he's been with me. He's been here a long time, so we've got amazing people. Alright, now, my next three, the ones that have to hear a lot. Captains, come on forward, please. Hey, can we get, yeah, the mayor's requested a height, so we can sit, nevermind. I didn't say that. You're going to stand in front so you look taller. Who is, who does he look like? Okay, I want to make sure. Alright. So these are the three captains on three different shifts. They're not technically in uniform, they just were recently promoted. Those uniforms will be changed to go accordingly with the new gold badges they're about to receive. I told you earlier, Captain Martinez come from another city. He decided to come over and come on board. I was honored to get his years of experience as a firefighter, paramedic. Now he's a captain, paramedic. I got Colton Barber, or Colton Thorax, Lorax Barber, is that what it is? Colton Barber's been a part of the volunteer fire department even when I got here. So he was on the volunteer fire department before I got here, and has been here since 17, 2018. And then Sean Clements, Captain Clements. Known him a long time, long, long time. He come over here 2018, and then he's been a part, all these guys and gals have been a part of what we're doing and continuing to grow. So, alright, with that being said, family members? I can't because I'm running for the future. I got to keep it quiet. I can't even say it, I got to keep it quiet. Alright, I'm going to go up there and, am I your loved one, buddy? Or you want? There's a story behind it, but we got young ones in the room, we got to keep the spirit alive. Alright, these are your captains. Alright, now if we can have everybody gather up front. Oh, wait, no, I got one more, that's right. So, come on over here. Chief Stow. You don't even get your own badge out of the box. I forgot. Eddie Stow. During this last year, he was promoted to division chief, fire marshal. He's taken on some roles. Yep, they've heard back there, he's taken on a lot of roles, taking some weight off my shoulders, I'd say. Made my job a little bit easier at times. Sometimes you made it a whole lot dang harder. So, but with that being said, Eddie Stow brings lots of knowledge and experience here, and I'm excited to see him grow. So where's your, come on up, loved ones? So where's your, come on up, loved ones. It's taken a while to get Chief Stow used to peopling. We're getting, we're, we're working on it, we're slowly getting there. He's getting a lot better. Outstanding. Outstanding. Stay right there, Chief Stow, stay right there. You're gonna be, all right, everybody, if you come back up, we're gonna get this thing wrapped up here for quick, so all of my troops come on back up to the front real quick. And then we'll let the council get to city business. Yes, we got, yes, we have one more. Gather round, gather round. Man, sharp-looking group right here. Now you mayor. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you like each other. You like each other a whole lot. Okay, everybody look at me and say bling.
All right, here we go. All of you are gonna raise your right hand. Hopefully all of you know who your name is. You will, when I say state your name, you will state who you are. When I say state your position, you will state your position. Everybody copy? All right, aye, state your name. Reset, here we go. All right, we're starting over. Aye, state your name. This is the last time. Aye, state your name. There we go. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of your position. That's why I love this group. In the city of McLennan Chisholm of the state of Texas, and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God. That was all on me. I messed that up from the beginning because we weren't loud enough, and then I just ran through it horribly. Captain Burrows, if you please come forward. And if everybody would stay right here. Captain Burrows is gonna be presented proclamation. Step back, you buddy. Captain Burrows has recently retired after, I was gonna say sixty-two, because that's usually a run joke, but thirty-three years of service to the fire service. Came from Rowlett, Sunnyvale, and then finished out his years here with the city of McLennan Chisholm. Known Tony Burrows for a long time, um, been a long time, thirty years now. And so, recently is retiring from the department. We're honored, I wanted to make sure that we celebrate him, his service to the fire service community for his commitment and dedication. So tonight, I'm gonna hand the mic over to the mayor, and he's gonna do a proclamation for Captain Burrows.
So first of all, the chief will never do an oath again. It's typically broken down by a few words, not full paragraphs. Still love you. Okay, proclamation. Whereas the city of McLennan Chisholm, a fire rescue department established in April two thousand eighteen by ordinance two thousand eighteen dash zero one, for the prevention and suppression of fire, rescue, emergency medical services, and the protection of life and property within the limits of the city. And whereas Tony Burrows joined the McLennan Chisholm Fire Rescue Department in March of two thousand twenty-two, and was promoted to captain in May of two thousand twenty-two. And whereas Captain Burrows came to the city of McLennan Chisholm with many years of
That will conclude our little ceremony, so we thank y'all for attending, and now we're gonna let the city get back to city business. Thank y'all again.